Thank you. Thank you. We will be going to the board. We will be spending time in the board. We will discuss the new. They could see what's on their brain. That one is better off than that now.
Yeah.
Point, we have a close, we have some history. It's all. For. We're. We're. Yes. The party I just wanted to. More.
Take just during electronic.
Yeah. You don't want to. Actually, I'm too. When you. We would. We see.
Hey, we'd like to welcome you all and call to order the study meeting of the West Valley City Council. It is May 2, 2023. It is 4:30 PM and we are meeting in the multipurpose room of West Valley City Hall. We have all members of the council present. Councilman Fitzie Amanu is joining us electronically. In person, we have Councilman Norfeld, Councilman Christensen, Councilman Whitstone, Councilman Harmon, Councilman Hune and myself. We are also joined at the table with Mr. Pyle, our city manager, and Ms. Kamic, our city recorder. We now have our minutes of April 25, 2023. I'll turn it to the council for discussion or a motion.
Should you approve?
I have one. Um, in the minutes for the budget, I asked if we could have those presented here instead of a memo. But we got memo instead. I don't know if we're gonna have discussion or presentation here also.
We have it listed on the communications. Yeah.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion in second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And I'll take signups from Jake as an affirmative.
Aye. Don't worry about it. Aye.
Thank you. So those pass unanimously. We will now review our agenda for this evening. Mr. Pyle, do you have any changes?
Uh, no ma'am, no changes to any of the four.
Okay. Did anybody have any questions? Hey, thank you. We'll now move to our communication items. We have a UDOT presentation by Alex Fisher Willis. And we'll turn the time to her.
Faster than I expected, so. Yeah, let you finish doing what you're doing and then we can get to the first slide. There we go. Um, thanks again for having us on the agenda tonight. Wanted to give you an update on our Bangater State Environmental Study. Um, last time I met with you guys, I walked through the four different alternatives we looked at, as well as where we're at in the screening process. Um, tonight I'll do a brief recap on where we landed and also walk through our preferred alternative and all of our upcoming events. Um, so we had four alternatives we looked at. The first alternative A was the full frontage road system from 41st to California. The second alternative was interchanges. Um, this included interchanges at 41st, 35th Parkway, SR201, 1820 in California, and it had eliminated access on and off of Bangater Highway at 3100 South and 2400 South. However, you would still be able to cross Bangater East and West. Alternative C is the partial frontage road. So this was a frontage road system from 35th to just past SR201. Um, it would be a full interchange at 4100 South and a full interchange at California Avenue. And then the fourth alternative, um, we looked at, it's pretty much the same as alternative B with the interchanges. However, we added on ramps at 3100 South. There's not enough space to do on ramps and off ramps at that location, but we did look at preventing the access onto Bangater Highway. In our first level of screening, we screened out the alternative A, which was the full frontage road system. In this uh, level of screening, we focused mostly on our travel times and accessibility. And with the full frontage road system, we actually had a lot of issues at 4100 and 3500 South. Um, just all that traffic from 41st on the frontage road system basically shut down 3500 South. So we had a level of service D or worse at 3500 South in Bangeter, and we also had um, non-unacceptable level of service at the intersections near Bangeter Highway. Before we move forward to our second level of screening, we wanted to make sure that the three alternatives remaining didn't have substantially different travel times to get to different areas in the valley. And we ran a couple of different models and what we found was it took less than a minute to get to different areas in the valley from each option. So whether it was alternative B, C, or D, your travel time was relatively the same. So level two screening focused on right-of-way and cost. And we quantified the right-of-way impacts, um, both full and partial impacts to business and residential um, in the area. Um, with this, we included the costs for those right-of-way impacts within our full cost of the, what the project would be. And then we analyzed, analyzed these costs and compared them to the benefits of the project itself. Um, using this holistic approach, it really helped us screen out which alternative would be the most beneficial and least impactful and also least costly for the project. So with that, we ended up screening out alternative C and D, and our preferred alternative is alternative B, which is the interchanges. So with alternative B, again, we would have full interchanges at 41st, 35th Parkway, SR201, 1820 in California Avenue, and we would eliminate access on and off of Bangeter Highway at 3100 South and 2400 South. One exciting feature about this section of Bangeter Highway is we are incorporating a shared use path. Um, this is kind of new to the whole Bangeter Highway system. As we started evaluating this segment, especially with the frontage roads, we knew we were gonna have a lot of remnant parcels and we're really impacting this community. So we wanted to do what we could do with those remnant parcels and make sure we're connecting the community back together. I know uh, Bangeter Highway has been a concern for West Valley since it was first built. It's kind of divided the city up. And so whatever we could do to help get the communities back together and um, outside, not just driving, but walking, biking, whatever means. Um, the shared use path will be along the west side of the corridor for the whole length, 41st to California. It will be 12 feet wide and it will have two-foot shoulders on each side. We've coordinated with both West Valley and Salt Lake City to make sure not only the width was sufficient, but also any of our curve, our uh, curve radii are large enough to fit the maintenance equipment and plows that they'll be using to maintain the facility. So I'll walk you through each of the interchanges, just kind of outline some of the key features. Okay, good, you can see the mouse. That way they can see it on the screen as well. I have my laser pointer, but those online won't be able to see that. So um, at 4100 South, this is the only location where we'll be able to take Bangeter under. However, it won't be fully under like we see it other locations south of here. The groundwater table is still fairly high, so we can only go about 20 feet. It's gonna be in that range. Um, 4100 South will be raised about 10 to 15 feet. Um, so it won't be as dramatic, but it'll still have a little bit of an uphill. Um, but it'll still create nice views of the city. Um, we have the shared use path again on the west side. It'll cross under 4100 South at that location, since 41st will be going over. Um, it'll continue north and we'll actually have a pad crossing at, I believe this is 3950 South. I can't remember the exact street. I think that's right. Um, we worked with both the city and the school district. There's two elementary schools and a junior high school whose boundaries have fluctuated over the years, and Bangeter has not been a consistent boundary. So we've had students crossing back and forth. So we figured this would be a great opportunity for students traveling as well as for access to that east neighborhood onto the shared use path. Um, this light blue line is the Jordan Valley Aqueduct. From 41st to 31st will pretty much be re-aligning the entire aqueduct. Um, we have to get outside of our roadway profile since we have all these structures going in. Um, so we're just kind of demonstrating where that location is. Similar to what they're doing on 4700 South, this will most likely be constructed first and then our project will come in and um, be constructed from there. We also have noise walls proposed in, throughout the corridor. Uh, we did do a noise study and this location, we have noise walls proposed on all, proposed on all four quadrants at 13 feet tall. Um, all of the residents will be able to ballot uh, as we get closer to construction. And as you'll see, we'll also have some of the detention, uh, drain water, stormwater detention facilities pointed out just to help, um, especially as we move forward, neighborhood meetings, just help people understand why properties may be acquired when it doesn't look like the roadway is impacting them. We do have stormwater that we have to accommodate for. Um, this is just a kind of an image of what 41st could potentially look like. Um, as you can see, Bangeter kind of dips down a little bit, not as much as, as I said, you'd see on other locations further south. And 41st goes up slightly, so we do have this wall. This is standing on the, basically on the roof of the old Granger Medical. I think it's called the 41st Commons or something like that now. Um, so it's, it still provides a very nice viewpoint for the city. It's not taken at all underneath. Um, it's unfortunate we can't do that all the locations. 3500 South, um, as I mentioned, all the other interchanges will be going underneath Bangeter Highway. Uh, this will be a spooey interchange. We will continue the shared use path on the west side. We do have an undercrossing here just south of Granger High School following the North Jordan Canal Trail. We have worked with the school district and the North Jordan Canal to um, get this approved and coordinate with them. Uh, the school district's very excited about this option. Hopefully we can get the students out of this interchange and intersections on 35th and get them kind of in a safer area to cross the school. Um, we also coordinated with the police department. We did the walk audit last summer and the police department had some requests to make sure if it's a tunnel, they can park at the end of it so they can see through for safety measures. And the school district is planning on putting up some fencing with gates that will be timed with their school, with their school schedule, so that uh, just the general public can't access the school during school hours. Just kind of help with that security. We also plan to take that shared use path down to 3600 West and hopefully tie it into Lancer, where I know you guys have some improvements going in, so it'd be nice to connect that whole system together. Um, at this location, the aqueduct will now shift to the east side and stay underneath our ramps to get out from underneath our structures. And then again, we have noise walls on all four quadrants of this intersection. On the south side, they're 13 feet tall. On the northwest, they are 14 feet tall, and on the northeast, they are 15 feet tall. At 3100 South, this location, as I mentioned, will not have access on Bangeter Highway anymore. Um, it does help eliminate a lot of the impacts in this area. As you can see, it's a lot smaller footprint. Um, one of the big areas we're not impacting is American Prep Academy. We had a lot of conversations with them. If we do impact their parking lot, um, it really affects their carpool drop-off and pickup because they try to maintain that within their school limits. Um, which is a pretty big challenge. I'm sure many of you know, if any of you've been to a school drop-off, it can shut down the roadway system pretty quick. So um, they're really happy to see that we're not be impacting them and I think a lot of the residents in that area will be pleased about that as well. Um, shared use path will go over 31st at this location. Um, if you want to access 31st east and westbound, we will tie right in on the surface street with the path. And noise walls, um, this one, it's only in three of the quadrants. I believe, yes, we do not have it on the northeast corner. Um, again, on the south side, the southwest, it'll be 14 foot tall. Southeast, it'll be 15 feet tall, and the northwest will be 15 feet tall. Parkway Boulevard will be a tight diamond interchange. It'll also be underneath. Um, this footprint was used to help with the horizontal landscape, or the horizontal design as well as the um, tying into the existing facilities on the west side and really helps keep that footprint tighter as well. The shared use path will go over Parkway Boulevard. Um, it is a pretty steep grade, so we do have kind of this nice loop ramp that'll be climbing up and over. Um, we have noise walls proposed on the south side at 15 feet. I do want to note, we do have a noise wall proposed at the golf course for 10 feet tall. Um, as we get closer to construction, since that is a city-owned golf course, the city will get the opportunity to ballot, but that will happen as we get closer to construction. So just want to make you all aware, start thinking about whether you want a noise wall along the golf course or not. As we move north, um, at 2400 South, this intersection will not have access to Bangeter Highway. Um, moving forward, it will go over Bangeter Highway instead of under. Um, that's mostly because what we found through our initial design, it was easier and less impactful to take 2400 South over. Um, there's not a whole lot of residents and businesses in that area and there's not a lot of access near Bangeter Highway. That's usually are one of our key limitations from taking one of the surface streets over. You have a lot of access roads connecting right up against it, which you end up cutting those off if you build a structure. So we took 24, 2400 South over. There are still opportunities to access Bangeter Highway 2100 South, um, both on this 4000 West road, which we will be realigning, as well as President's Drive. I'm gonna start navigating you guys through the 201 interchange. Um, there's a lot going on here and this is kind of the, the starting point. So going northbound on SR, or sorry, northbound on Bangeter Highway, if you want to take SR201 eastbound or westbound, you'll need to get off Bangeter Highway closer to 2400 South and take this ramp. As you get closer to this intersection right here, if you go right, this takes you to 2100 South frontage road. And if you take it left, it will continue up into here into the interchange. And from there, you can either go west on 201 or east on 201. Um, same for going southbound. If you're on 201 southbound and you want to get on Bangeter, um, you just take this ramp. You have access to this kind of connector street at 2200 South. And then from there, you can get to 21st, you can take, make your way south to 24th, or you can continue on that ramp right here onto Bangeter Highway. Um, now, if you want to stay on Bangeter Highway, that's the nice part. You just stay on this, this whole freeway system right here. Um, this will be a three-tiered system. SR201 will stay at its current elevation. The interchange will be kind of a second inner, second level, and then Bangeter Highway will be the highest level um, structure. And they're staggered that way for several reasons. One, UDOT owns a lot of that right-of-way, so it makes it easier for us to take up the space and it's a lot easier to construct one at a time instead of trying to stack them on top of each other. So it's a big footprint, but um, seems to be the most efficient right now. The shared use path will continue on the west side uh, following 4000 West. It'll cross under 2200 South. It'll cross under 2100 South and then it'll loop up and cross over at SR201 and then make its way north. Um, and again, all of these curves, we worked with both West Valley and Salt Lake to make sure all of those radii are big enough that the pickup trucks that they use for plowing, most of the trails will fit. Um, to continue our travels on SR201 in Bangeter, if you're on 201 and you want to go onto Bangeter northbound, um, you'll just take one of these ramps right here and it'll bring you up onto this little ramp continuing north. And it'll take you to 1820 South intersection. Um, the volumes of this going northbound are fairly low and this intersection, the east-west traffic on, at this intersection is also fairly low. So this, this movement seems to work really well in all of our modeling. Um, you'll go through that intersection and then merge onto Bangeter Highway. And then kind of the same, as I showed you going southbound, we've got all the various ramps. Um, for 1820 South, this is another tight diamond interchange. It's also underneath. The shared use path continues on the west side. This is the only street that we do not have a grid-separated crossing. Like I mentioned, the traffic here is just very low. It really didn't justify putting in a grid separation yet.
So does this one have the convenience store kind of on that southwest corner? I think that was. Or is that for the?
7-Eleven, yes.
Yeah, so it's, okay.
Yeah.
I know where it's at. Thank you.
Um, yeah, and then as we move forward, we get to California Avenue, which is a spooey, and the shared use path continues. We've kind of got this nice big ramp to climb up and over so we can tie into Salt Lake's uh, planned facility that'll be on the south side of the road as well. Um, so that's kind of the layout of Bangeter. It's a lot of information. Um, I don't know if you guys have any questions about the layout at this time?
Any questions?
I, I'm seeing a lot of pedestrian crossings.
Yes.
Gonna be great crossings, or are they gonna be?
All of them that we have lined out, except for 1820, are grade separated.
Excuse me?
All of them are gonna be grade separated, except 820. And we have three crossing Bangeter. There was the two underneath between 41st and 35th, and then this one on California that'll go over.
I just know my wife fought for some great separation on those way back when, so I don't want to lose all that.
No, neither do we, especially if we're putting a full path in. We want to make sure it's safe for everybody traveling on it.
Hate to have to get the Chad ladies back up there with their cookies.
Yeah. Um, so next steps, we do have a lot of public meetings coming up, starting next week. Next week are invitation-only neighborhood meetings. These invitations go out to property owners being directly impacted by the project. Um, there'll be about 30 invitations per meeting. We have two meetings each night for six nights. We have 12 meetings total, so we've got a lot coming up. Um, beginning next Wednesday and Thursday, and then the following Wednesdays and Thursdays going out. Figured we needed to give our team a break and space it out a couple of weeks. Um, once those neighborhood meetings are done, uh, we'll have our public hearings, which are open to the general public. The first one is on May, or sorry, June 12th from 6 to 7 PM. That will be an online Zoom meeting. And then the following two will be June 14th and 15th from 6 to 7:30 PM. Um, both of these meetings will be held at Granger High School. The neighborhood meeting will be held in the media center. The public hearing will be held at the high school cafeteria. Um, we welcome all of you to attend any of these if you want. We did break it down, so if you have districts you're more um, concerned about, you can attend just those meetings for that district. So um, this map is available to you in the slides and yeah, these are just, yes.
So will the notice allow them, if they can't make their night, to go to another night? Since you have six meetings, or do you want them to just stay in there?
No, we, we just broke it out for kind of REs to make it smaller clumps, but if they can't make it to their night, they're welcome to come any of the other nights.
Will that be on the notice? So I understand that.
It is on the notice, okay. Yeah, I.
Thank you.
Um, we also plan to have translators at meetings and we've kind of looked at the demographics of certain areas to make sure we have some of, especially like the Asian translators at those meetings. Um, and again, if, you know, their neighbors show up and say, oh, hey, they can't make it tonight, we'll make sure we have those translators available for when they can come.
Okay.
Um, once we get through the neighborhood meetings and public hearing, actually, kind of between neighborhood meetings and public hearing, we'll be really, releasing the draft State Environmental Study that will be released on the 28th. We are gonna do a 45-day comment period. Typically, we do 30 days, but with the size of this project, we wanted to give an extra two weeks just to make sure everybody got an opportunity to take a look at the document and provide comments if they want to. So our comment period closes on July 12th. Um, at that point, we'll take all of the comments, review them and address them and incorporate them into our documents. And then we hope to release the final document later this summer. Um, we don't have funding until 2028. Um, we've done a lot of digging and we can't purchase any right-of-way until 2028. We were hoping we could get away with some corridor preservation, but we cannot because it is already approved and funded with our STIP program. So we're, we're working through some options. If we do have individuals that have concerns and want to sell prior to them, we just don't have anything lined out quite yet. We're working through that, so if you get questions on that, we're working on it. Um, so right-of-way will be scheduled to begin in 2028 as long, as well as construction and our contractor procurement. Here's kind of an outline of our right-of-way process. Um, you guys share this if you get questions, have it on hand. Um, first thing we do is identify what properties will be impacted, which that's kind of where we're already at. We've finalized that step and we're now reaching out to those property owners um, to let them know if it's gonna be a full partial acquisition and what their options are. Once we have funding in 2028, we will begin hiring right-of-way professionals to start doing appraisals and begin the acquisition process. Um, to, how to comment on the document and our process itself, you can visit our website, u dot dot utah dot gov. BangeterHighway slash Bangeter, 4100 to California. You can email us at bangeter@utah.gov or you can mail written comments to our Bangeter team at the Horrocks office. Um, and if you guys want copies of these or you want to share this printed out, you can also use the QR code to access our website. And just a couple of other ways to contact us, mostly the hotline, 888-766-Road, so. Got a lot coming up. You guys have any questions?
Any questions?
The invitation meetings, what's the radius around the site that you're inviting folks?
I don't think it was a specific radius. It was just more a number of invitations, just if it was commercial, there could obviously be a bigger radius because of bigger properties. Um, I think it was 30 to 40. Per meeting? Per meeting? 30 to 40 invitations, property owners per meeting.
With the radius in the neighborhood, we only invited impacted property owners to the meetings.
I do.
And Brittany does have some flyers. We also have some business cards with our hotline information. Um, that has the public hearing information on it. Yeah, so she has flyers with the public hearing information. She'll leave for you guys, so you can hand them out, hang them up, share them with your friends. Any other questions?
No, I think you did a wonderful job.
Great.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, I appreciate yours this time. Hopefully, we'll be seeing each of you over the next couple of weeks. Thanks.
All right, we'll move on to our budget update. We'll turn the time to Ms. Pyle.
Thanks ma'am. Um, so a request was made last week for some further budget information on any items in the expenditure of the general fund that, that exceeded a 10% change. So I prepared a memo for that and sent it to you. There were 10 items that were in that. Wasn't really sure how the council would want to discuss that, so I'm available to answer questions on it or I could go over the items individually, however you would like to proceed.
Thanks. Any questions?
Would, I would like it be presented so the public has opportunity to hear what was in the memo.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear.
I would, I'd like it be presented. I mean, if you wanted to read out that, whatever the memo is, just so the public has an opportunity to hear what.
Sure. Yep. Yep, absolutely. In fact, I've got, made sure that Kush had a copy of it so we could do that if you wanted to. So I'm sorry, Ken Cushing. So he's gonna bring that up here. Trying to read. To uh, refer to Ken by your nickname there. So as you'll see when he brings that up, like I mentioned, there are 10 items and how I listed them was by the line number that they fall in, in the budget, summary budget. And then also the division, or I may have shorthanded that a little bit so I could make the tabs work, the amount and then uh, a uh, brief explanation. So that's good. That's it. Are you looking to be able to blow it up or something? Ken or? Yeah, there you go. And as I mentioned, I think everybody has a copy, but there you go. As, as Scott mentioned, we can see it on the screen. So the first item is line 116 to the recorder. So the indigent defense contract falls under the recorder's budget and um, that will increase roughly, well, we originally budgeted it in the proposed budget for a $400,000 increase. It probably will be a lot less than that, but we don't know yet because we haven't seen the proposed contract. So um, that is the increase. And then we also put in the, I'm sorry, I'm looking at the next line. So the next line is 122, the capital fleet. And the, this isn't really an increase in the fleet expenditure. Well, actually, that's not true. Last year, I think we budgeted, once it was approved as a budget opening, 1.25 or 1.3 million per fleet. We've increased that to 1.5 as a request. But it wasn't included in the budget, as we remember last year at all. So it would have showed up as a, or did show up as a budget opening and therefore would show this year as a increase from zero to the 1.5. And then there's also the $400,000 capital facilities replacement, uh, repairs, the budget that I proposed and program modification. So that makes up the 1.9 million.
What is the 400? What is the four hundred paid for?
This would be for things like HVAC repairs, uh interior remodels.
Okay, so that's included in the fleet?
No, it's included in that number.
In line one twenty-two.
Yes, in line one twenty-two. Yeah, exactly. Line one thirty-seven is a contribution to the fund balance. The Arts Fund runs a negative fund balance, and it's a relatively recent one, and by state law, we have to put a particular amount in that, so that's the forty thousand there. Uh, let's see, line one forty-one, professional technical. This one is, again, as I mentioned, it's not a new expenditure, but in terms of how the auditors wanted us to show it, it would show up here. So whereas it was a zero line before, it's now the one seventy-five. And let's see here, we're line one fifty-four. This is a debt service payment, starting in the, in the amortization schedule that was set up a number of years ago. It's offset by a contribution from the R D A, so it's not a general fund expense, but it does show there, and it is a a zero to that number increase. Uh, next line, line line one eighty is the first debt service payment for the Justice Court Building. The next line, two oh five, is Neighborhood Services Increase. So remember, I um proposed a program mod increase of about two hundred thousand dollars. You'd say it's a little different than that, but these will be for Neighborhood Services, Operation My Hometown uh expenses, one of which is a um a headcount increase of one person, and then the other uh dollars in there are for actual operational uh expenses associated with that. Uh, let's see, line one thirty-seven. This is the other annual capital expenditure repair and replacement program mod we talked about. Uh, and it's also roughly four hundred thousand dollars. You see, it's a little more or a little less than that, but roughly that amount. Line one seventy-four is a public works change, four point three seven six million to five point one six four million, and the reason for this is uh what decrease in sold services means is we have engineer positions in there that are sometimes, depending on the fiscal year, funded or give a credit back or a negative expense to the general fund budget in terms of, you know, if we're getting money back from a federal grant or something like that. This year, we don't happen to have any of those uh sold service contracts, but we will in the future. So this represents basically just a fluctuation in that number that will change from year to year. And then the last one is animal control, one point four two to one point six one million. Um, the majority of that is a program modification, as I had proposed earlier, to hire a new shelter tech. I don't think it's all actually just the shelter tech. Part of it is also a wage increase, but um, that's the main one. So that's how I described it for that position. And that's it.
On the debt service for like the U C C and the Court Building, why do those start out at zero and then we knew about those?
The Justice Court one starts out at zero because it's the first payment. It's brand new. Um, so obviously, we didn't make a payment last year, so it's zero. The Cultural Center one, the reason it's showing from zero to that is we haven't had to make debt service payment from the general fund in there before, which is due to how the amortization schedule was set up uh many years ago.
So what is the balance on that debt?
On the Cultural Center?
Yeah.
I don't know. What is the balance on that? You know, Jim?
Um, the original, I'm trying to think of the amount that's actually due in principle. I think when it finished, it would be about forty-four million.
Forty-four million?
To pay off this debt.
And that's for the whole issue though, right? Not with the original Cultural Center?
That's, that includes the whole issue plus accrued interest plus everything that that went into it.
Okay, which was originally
thirteen fourteen. It's been deferred for about almost twenty years.
Yeah. It's not just that building. I believe that when that issue was refunded, it also included other facilities besides the Cultural Center.
Maverick Center is included in that?
There is parts, there's some Mavericks.
So what is the balance left owing on that debt?
On just, well, on the overall debt, as Jim said, he says.
That we still have forty-four million?
You'd have to look it up, but you're asking about the particular building. I don't know what.
What's it worth?
The building? Uh, we did have that appraised back a couple of years ago, but I don't remember.
Can't imagine forty-four million.
No, and like I said, it's not. The debt isn't just for the Cultural Center. It's for other issues that were refunded back at that time.
So the amortization schedule shows annual payment of approximately this going forward or?
No, it it changes. It actually increases pretty significantly, but the R D A is responsible for that, or that was the original uh indication or their original intentions back then.
What's the maturity date uh when for that one?
Maturity date? I don't know. Like
Yeah, I'd have to look that up also.
Yeah, we can come back. We can get to that information if you'd like.
Then the program mods, it, you put them in tonight's budget approval, or are we going to push them off and?
No, they're they're in, and they've been in the original um numbers as presented to you from the beginning.
Okay, so that list is on the budget itself? The program mods and then the addition of the fence and the puzzle and?
Oh, sorry. So that, the program mods I'm talking about here are the operational ones. The C I P one is a different one, not included in this.
So it will not be on tonight?
No.
Okay, so we'll get more information on that one later?
Right, in fact, my intention is uh, next, one of my items on my list that we talked about was bringing you that C I P list we talked about before for like just a resolution.
Right.
Adoption. It doesn't really make it a budget, budget-approved item, because you still got to do any kind of contract approvals, budget openings at the time, whatever. It wouldn't be included in this budget. That resolution is really just indicating council direction.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, thank you. We will now go to the council calendar. Were there any questions? Or concerns on that?
Um, the police. And uh, the party, when is, is that Friday or?
Next Friday.
Yeah, not this Friday, but it's Friday.
That's right. What time is it? Six o'clock?
Six thirty?
Six thirty, it says on the calendar.
Yeah. Uh huh. Hey. Seeing no other concerns there? Potential future agenda items?
B T A.
Oh, yeah, yeah, thanks. I knew there was, I knew there was something I was supposed to bring up. So you all had a presentation last week um concerning this new hotel tax that was added uh percentage-wise to room bookings. As asked, and we were asked for like a staff, not necessarily recommendation, but perspective or or thought on it. I have spoken with hoteliers, spoken with the chamber, spoken with uh Kevin at Maverick Center, who could potentially be affected positively by this. You have like sporting events sponsored, promoted, that sort of thing. Everybody on that side is in favor of this uh action. From a staff standpoint, the only concern we really have is the same one we have that many times when these sorts of funding uh mechanisms are set up, and they're run through the county. And they'll set up a board in many cases like this one is proposing. Then that board makes a recommendation. Often, I'm not even exactly sure. In this case, if it goes directly to the the mayor or not, maybe it's somebody else, but it's a board that makes a recommendation to a body within the county, which then approves that expenditure. Because it's not directly distributed to us, philosophically, we've always had a we'd rather have, so you know, preference that those funds came to us directly, and this, that would not be the case, and we'll see it, which means you, of course, don't have direct control over that if if it's passed and instituted, but that's our only role.
It's passed. Can they also change the percentage down the road without asking us?
I don't think they can do that.
By year.
Yeah, only by legis legislative action.
So one of my concerns.
Kevin, he said he has been president of the the sports organization.
Right.
Uh, a little kind of control, I think.
Yeah.
In the past, and so he's, he's confident with them.
Yeah, I did have that conversation with him.
Their transparency and he would not be he was excited to hopefully get some other
Yeah.
bookings.
Kevin did speak positively of it.
We can't keep the Eagles playing all year. For the Grizzlies.
Eagles are a long time.
Another Well, it does host, but it doesn't accommodate hockey.
Right.
So one of my concerns is there's no guarantee that the money spent in West Valley stays in West Valley. Am I understanding that right? Okay.
Yeah, there's no guarantee for sure. Yes, ma'am.
And then the other thing was, um, they were talking at one time when we've got, when I had the first convention government, that they were wanted to like program our ball fields and such. Do we even have, I mean, we've had people come in and say, we don't, there's not even a slot for us to have our girls play.
Right.
What would we do with others coming in? Do we even have the capacity to handle that?
Right, right. So on a case-by-case and event basis, in the past, we have had events like that. Nancy's fitted them in and scheduled them where possible, whether this would affect that from an overall volume and therefore demand standpoint, can't really speak to either, but yes, it could be a, be an issue.
You could take away from our local people, they don't use our fields.
Possibility. Now, of course, we would have say over that, all they would be able to do is just promote, and that'd be our final decision as far as scheduling goes, but yes, it could put further pressure on the facilities.
Okay. So I guess our next move is to see if there's an appetite to move forward with it or not. Any thoughts from the council?
They could come back or maybe provide us information, but I would like a little bit more on the control of the funds because they came to the chamber and presented, and it seemed like the hoteliers had more control rather than just a advisory committee than, and then it goes to the county.
They did speak like that. It was kind of a disconnect to me, and maybe I'm just not understanding it either, but that's not how I understood.
Be willing to come back to study meeting and give us a little more insight on that, but I do think it's worth the discussion.
Cool, then I think the sales pitch was, I was telling, but there's a lot of behind-the-scenes type of things that we probably didn't get a ton of info on.
Okay.
Be good to further dispense.
So it was my understanding they need a decision by the end of May? Is that their hard deadline as far as the legislature?
Familiar.
Yeah. So would the council like them to try and see if we can schedule for next week and get another presentation and come back and have questions answered? Because then you still need a resolution in study session and a resolution. So we're getting like to the end of when we'd be able to get it all done before the end of the month.
Good for them.
Very good with that? Okay, so do you mind doing that, Nicole?
I can reach out and see if they're level, okay.
Any other concerns on potential future agenda items? Facing them, I'll go to the council reports.
Citizens Academy's great.
Oh, good.
Had a shocking experience last week. So I got tased. So if you want, you need a good laugh, I have video of it.
That can be your opening ceremony one week.
Yeah. Those bars are no joke, that's for sure.
Okay, so today I attended the announcement of the purchase of Jordan Valley West owned by Stewart, and it is now being purchased by I always want to call up the boat name, Centura. Centauria, I want to call it a Centurian. Um, but it is a Holy Cross facility, so they started out as Holy Cross, and they're going back as Holy Cross. And um, in their talks, their speeches today, this is not a, we're just going to beautify it and then sell it off in two years. It's a long-term commitment, and they really want to be involved in the community and bring a lot of positive actions to the community, and they want to be very, very involved in the community fairs and activities. So I think it's going to be really good.
I'm I'm not sure I understand. Are you talking about the hospital?
Jordan Valley. So it'll be Holy Cross, Jordan Valley West will be the new name. So right now, it still has the steward because they were trying to keep it as quiet as possible until the announcement today. They didn't want anybody knowing ahead of time, and then so it's kind of on their marquee, but then they'll change out the steward sign really soon. So.
This is still pioneer?
Yes, but that costs you a hundred dollars to say out loud at that hospital, so I don't say it.
All right.
No.
How much is it to say Valley West?
Nothing. That's what they're leaving that in there. So and the one thing is, uh, one of the members of the board was saying they maybe tweak the name a little bit because Jordan Valley West, they'd rather have it West Valley, Jordan or something. I don't know. So they might tweak that around a little bit over the next year, but they honestly started looking at this purchase last June. They did their letter of intent in December at their forty-five day due diligence, and then there, they announced it today, so they said it's the quickest acquisition they've had. And they're very, very excited. So and their employees are very excited. They've given them new employee packets, and so their benefits are much better, and hopefully that will help with retention and keeping the consistency in that hospital.
So has it gone through all the regulatory, like F T C and?
Yep. Because Saint Mark's um H C A was looking at purchasing it a year and a half ago, and that got turned down by the freight commission, so this one went through just smoothly. And they have quite a few hospitals throughout the United States, so the nuns started it, the nuns are back. So full circle moments for some of those doctors. There's quite a few that were there at the very beginning and are still there. Not all practicing, but they're on the board and such, so.
Hope not, because I know the age of all these fun of those.
Yeah.
Organizations, and he's pushing daisies now.
Yeah, well, the ones that were present today that are on the current board and started with the hospital. Yeah, they're very excited and looking forward to it, so should be positive and great. And then I did attend the funeral of our volunteer that passed away, and that was really a heartfelt service, so that was good. And that was all I got done.
I did attend over the weekend, uh, the performance of End of the Woods.
Oh, cool.
It's very well done. Because of other circumstances, I arrived late. They took care of me, got me in, let me, they said, well, intermission is not for another five uh hour and a half, so.
Well, they snuck you out.
So they sneaked me in the back.
It sounds like that's a pretty successful venture we've got down there. People have really had positive comments.
Yes, I I had positive comments from all over the valley about it.
Good.
Will and I attended the ripping cutting for hires and meats pizza, and they've got a brand-new dining room. And uh we had lunch. It was pretty good, so you need some lunch at the south end of the city. Hire's is open.
Get the first patty off the grill.
First onion rings, I think.
First onion.
That's good. Hey, anyone else? All right, uh, we don't have anything on the strategic discussion, so do you have any for a closed session tonight?
No, ma'am. Thank you.
Okay, so we just have one more action item.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And we stand adjourned. Thank you.